The work session. Under executive items, we have first, reduction in force, policy guidelines by Bevel State Community College. I believe this probably is as far as the policies that been approved for several of the other institutions. Any questions from the board on this, right or wrong, under executive? If not, we move to item two. Policy, proposed policy two-two-two point oh-one, open records request for the system.
Good morning, board members. I will take succinctly the five policies in order, beginning with policy two-two-two oh-one, open records request. This is a new policy. It will provide guidance to colleges related to the Opens Records Act. The second proposed policy is six-zero-two-oh-one. This policy was previously approved by this board in April of two thousand and sixteen. One of the proposed changes is as to the title of the policy. The policy is currently titled Hiring Practices and Procedures. The proposed revision changes the title to Posting and Hiring. In addition to the change in title, the proposed policy also places responsibility for all hiring, searches, and maintenance of appropriate documentation on the president. It removes reference to following the uniform guidelines for recruitment and selection. It requires vacant positions to be posted in an area in plain view at each college's campus for a minimum of fourteen calendar days in accordance with Alabama law. The third policy, six-oh-two-oh-four, internal employee transfers, is also a proposed new policy. The proposed policy will replace the procedures for transfers currently found in the uniform guidelines with policy verbiage. It also removes the listing of required documents and waiting periods for transfer letters and postings. It includes references to the internal posting rules, as well as the student's first act for procedures for implementation. It further removes the need for chancellor approval and guidance from the system offices HR division or legal division. The next proposed policy is six-zero-two-oh-five, reorganizations. This is also a new policy. This policy will replace the procedures for reorganizations of positions currently located in the uniform guidelines with policy verbiage. It removes reference and procedure for merger or consolidation throughout the document. The last policy is six-twenty-four-oh-one, reduction in force. This former policy was previously approved by the State Board of Education in two thousand and eleven. The proposed changes include the recommendation to approve, to shift the approval from the board to the president's with chancellor consent. It removes the three-year review of guidelines by the chancellor. This proposed policy does track previously approved RIF policies, including the Bevels RIF policy that you have before you today. I must note that there was one addition to this policy after the board's policy review committee approved the policy. And that is as to the note that you see at the top, which notifies you that this board did not approve the current policy. It was approved by the State Board of Education in two thousand and eleven. There were no other changes to the document. All five policies have been thoroughly vetted through the president's HR personnel, as well as approval from the board's policy review committee. Are there any questions?
Policy six-twenty-four-oh-one, does that mitigate the policies that we are approving for individual colleges now?
No, it does not. This just means that this is the process that the colleges will follow for issuing their own individual RIF policies. They are still required to do so. Any additional questions?
On the new policy, twenty-two, two-twenty-two-oh-one, open records, is the list of exemptions that are in the bullet out of last year, is effectively one of these same as attorney-client privilege?
Information received in anticipation of litigation or likely litigation?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see specifically language that says attorney-client privilege. Maybe that is subject to open, just a question.
Attorney-client privilege is not such a...
So should it be listed here?
We can, if that's what you like, I just didn't think that it's necessary. We can add that if that's your preference. It doesn't, so I'm saying we can add it.
Whatever's appropriate, just want to correct the format.
I'll make that change.
Item seven, the construction and renovation projects, twenty-sixteen odd issues available state.
Good morning, board and chancellor. The first thing I want to say to you today is that I bring you holiday greetings from a blended institution. And we're celebrating our twenty-fifth year anniversary this year. And I just think that's worth stating today, and what I mean by blended institution, an institution that merged many, many years ago. So we've been through probably things that coastal may be going through now for many years. So greetings from a great institution. You have before you today a letter that I did address to the chancellor in late November, and I have three requests in that letter. First, I'm requesting an extension of time to execute contracts for a bond that the college did receive in two thousand and sixteen. Second, I'm requesting to remove a million dollars from that two thousand and sixteen bond to the Alabama Power HVAC Training Center project, which, you know, we established back in the summer. And my third request is that you authorize the college to return to you within the next nine months, if you grant our extension, to come back to you with a comprehensive plan about our one stops. I am prepared to give you a brief description of the events that brought us here today, if everyone wants to hear that. I am prepared.
Chancellor, now, we did a deep dive of this, go back and look at a lot of circumstances. I have no reservation to talk to those members, to some of those members of the board. Had a great time with your team, appreciate it.
Appreciate that, Mr. Smith. So I can go into some details, but it doesn't seem that that's necessary. So that is our request before you, and I hope to have you pass that at the next board meeting in January.
You're saying that your committee looked at this?
First thing they did, the chancellor asked me to look into it, for example, documents. What those circumstances have gathered to this point, and then get what the circumstances, talk Roger and them, and provide what this is, what this is like.
So effectively, we're looking at being all of those projects. And is it facility-related? So I guess the only question I have, is the effort here, are we, are the new efforts, new construction, new facilities coming in, or is this for things that we were applying for, it's investment already made?
I can finish this for high-level summary, just...
I would glad to do that, very high level. A year ago, you approved Bevel State Community College to get a four-point-seven million dollar bond to build one stops. And that plan went into effect, and you approved that bond issue in December of sixteen. A lot of things have changed in a year at our institution, as you may well know. In late spring, we did choose an architect. We were ready to start with our one stops. Then we also simultaneously were working on the HVAC Alabama Power project that I know you're familiar with. We anticipated that that project, the renovation of the building we purchased, would be about a half a million dollars. That came in at one-point-six million instead of half a million. There are a lot of things that led us to that. We are prepared to answer those specific questions if we need to today. A huge piece of that is timeline.
Question there is, is a bid price, you said it came in, is it a bid price, is it an estimate, what stage is it at, or is it actual cost?
I got, it is actual cost, it is actual cost. It came in a little bit higher than that. We negotiated, working with our architect, and we did get that lowered a bit. But I'm just, we were all very surprised, but we do believe because of the timeline of this project, because we had about five months to complete this project, which was part of the MOU with Alabama Power. Okay, so that occurred, and then in the midst of that, my institution also faced some budget issues. And that's not, it is a problem, but we faced them, and that's what we're doing now. We are constantly monitoring our budget, and we're going to take care of our institution. So with that said, we came back to you in, I believe it was June, and asked for a bond to borrow three-point-one million so we could purchase the building that was for the HVAC project, and you approved that. Well, it was after that I really discovered we had some budget issues, and I had intended if we needed extra money to go into our plant fund for the projects, once the bid came in, that is not a great option for us. I mean, if we had to go there, we would. A more viable option is for us to move a million dollars from the one-stop project and reexamine that project at a later date. I had wanted to come with you at this exact same time with the new plan for the one stops. There has just not been enough time, and enough thought has not gone into what it will take. Our institution is committed to one stops. It is the number-one goal in our three-year strategic plan. With outcome-based funding coming, it is critically important for the success of our students. So I don't want to back up on it, just not prepared completely to present that plan. I think that high level gets you to where we are today.
And I think it's important to recognize the fact that some of the overall planning and project and estimation, whatever else had gone on, some of that occurred well before Kim was in charge of the school. I think she got kind of, some things dropped on her that she was not expecting. She's had to struggle to manage through that process.
So I would just ask to move from the twenty-sixteen series to the twenty-seventeen series. Have we got any hurdles that we've got to deal with with respect to issuing audio of those bonds?
One, I can, I can, where is that?
And from your perspective, you don't see any additional fees or anything, or the revenues that are projected for the sixteen, the seventeen, are good?
Yes, yes, we are, and that's one reason it's so important to move forward with this. This project is going to, you know, bear revenue producer. And the sooner we can get people training in that building, the better we'll be, the position we'll be in for our repayment. But yes, we're fine.
When you project that time, the expenses for repayment, daylight, if you will, then a few years out, or do you know?
I believe it was a three-year, was it? Okay, we had a five-year pro forma that was originally part of the Alabama Power deal.
And that, that five years is still going to be valid with this million dollars?
It really is, because we've only, with all the hoops we jumped through, and I'm going to tell you, we jumped through a lot to get here today. We're only about a month behind on our timeline with the construction. As a matter of fact, the contractor believes they'll finish possibly by the end of the year.
Thank you, appreciate the information. And I think, I think it's also, there's a strong possibility that other projects will occur in that same building in the vision.
Well, let me put some icing on that cake. Bevel State has been notified that we're in the top ten for the Bellwether Awards for our partnership with Alabama Power. So we will be going to Orlando in the end of January to present our partnership. Because, you know, as we've said, public and private partnership is the right thing to do, is not an easy thing to do. But that is national recognition, and I couldn't tell you how, we couldn't be more excited.
Dr. Davis, that ROI, is that a calculated ROI, is that an estimated ROI, five years?
Roger.
Any other questions from the board? Dr. Davis, thanks for being here, appreciate it. Move to item eight, request for purchase of property by Lawson State Community College.
Good morning. To our members of the board, chancellor, I bring you greetings from central Alabama and specifically Lawson State Community College. And it's a pleasure to be here and just briefly share our proposal for purchase of this property. And I am not sure if I am controlling this, or if I am. I just wanted to show you the cost of the property that we are looking at purchasing. And just to highlight, and I'll show you after this slide, is that this piece of property probably couldn't be more conspicuously located. The yellow color in there to the left of this is right in front of our west campus. That is the main, major entrance to campus. And this piece of property has been vacant for about the last eighteen and nineteen months. The house is sitting there, it's deteriorating, no one has lived there. You get a lot of issues when you have vacant property. And the thing that is so difficult for us is it is the gateway into our main campus. So when you're coming on to campus, whether you're coming from Montgomery, from the state board, from the chancellor's office, from Washington DC, from wherever you're coming from, that's a major entrance into campus. And it's, at this point in time, a source of embarrassment, and we would like to create an aesthetic appearance coming on to campus. The cost of this property, we can assume for thirty thousand dollars. A phase-one study, to see if there are any environmental hazards, would be two thousand dollars. To demo the property would be approximately seventy-three hundred dollars, if we can't get any lower than that. Closing cost and attorney fees would run right at three thousand dollars. Total cost of acquisition is about forty-two-two-seven-five. The current tax value is seven-nine-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. So even acquiring and assuming the property, we still would more than achieve our value for that, as well as achieving the aesthetic appearance of having an overall campus, certainly want to control the future. That's the property that we're looking at and talking about. That's another view of it, how it's surrounded by woods and trees. And we get a lot of other debris and things shared on this property. If you go to just the other side of it, of this, would be the entrance to our campus. So that's, that's pretty much it. That's, you know, the reasons why we are here today, asking the board to consider this purchase. And at the end of the purchase, we still would increase and enhance the value, the economic value of the college. It's not a losing deal where you would lose any money or any property, or any value at this point. And more than anything, more than likely, we'll demo the house, clean up the property, because it's right there at the main entrance to the campus.
And also man say things to try to improve the appearance?
We're looking at using our staff to be able to do the actual landscape of the property.
President, the only comment I'd make is you lose the fact that you could get the demolition price down.
We hope, we hope.
It seems a little pricey, but that's micromanaging, that's just a comment on that, and I know you'll do the best you can.
Well, when we, when we get ready to go back, I think what we did is we got the first bid. We did get three for the board's presentation. It's my assumption at this point that it ought to be lower as well. And when we go back, we'll take, we'll get at least three bids, and then accept the lowest bid. All right, thank you so much.
Good morning. We are asking for permission to sell a small parcel that was acquired by the college in two thousand and six. It does have a building on it. It was never used by the college for any programs. I was not at the college at the time when it was initially purchased, but I believe it was more a general effort to expand the footprint of the college and get a little more frontage on the bypass in op. This is our, related to our MacArthur campus. And we did try to sell it in two thousand and nine, and at the time, entered with the board's approval, what at the time approved, a lease purchase agreement with a small business. That lease actually ends this month, and we were informed last month that the owner of the business no longer wishes to exercise the option. So at this point, we could either try to lease it, find somebody to lease it, or we would prefer to sell it because we do not have any plans for the college to use it. I'm familiar with this property, it's not, with the building, it's not really suitable for any of our, for our programs. So that is what we'd like to do today, or in this request, is simply to get permission from you all to proceed, to advertise it, to seek a buyer. We will of course get appraisals, so that we know what is appraised at.
Is it possible to have any covenants or restrictions based on, you know, the future use of someone's assets, property? Not even someone, go building out the side, told you have some business there that's not appropriate there?
We could certainly, we would deliver that. But we would come back to you with a particular buyer and with a contract. Thank you, Dr. Ida.
Kim Conver, he's come up, this is not an action item or something, it's an informational piece that I will intend to inform you about.
Yes, sir. Good morning, chancellor, members of the board. As the chancellor said, this doesn't require action on your part, do need to present this information to you. I think you would want to be aware of it, and something that we're about to do. This is an idea born out of our strategic planning sessions with some of our external stakeholders. The Huntsville Hospital System is really, is really challenged with finding the numbers of qualified nurses to come and work there, throughout all of their hospitals, in Decatur and Athens and in Huntsville proper. And they're really, they're really having some challenges with that. And the other thing that they always routinely talk to us about is that, is that they have a culture within their hospitals, an institutional culture, and that many of their, our graduates, when they go there, if they go there, they're green, they just pass their N-plex and go to work there. It takes them six months or a year to really learn the culture of the institution. I certainly can, I can understand that, it's probably true in any, any large institution, whether it's education or healthcare. So we began to talk with them about the need to expand the amount of nursing graduates that we could produce. And we could not really accommodate them in our Decatur campus, our Health Sciences building. We're serving about eight hundred students in that building alone, and just the growth was not there. And I told them, I said, "Look, I've got loads of room inside of our Sparkman building and our Huntsville campus that we could, we could look at doing," but of course, we have no money. And so the, we need to come up with some type of an agreement where we could help grow the nursing program, but also address maybe some of these greater issues about, about culture as well. And so what we have been doing is we have been working together with them to come up with a partnership that would involve the hospital, the Calvin Foundation, and the college as well. And we've reached an agreement, and the hospital is going to commit to the expansion of a nursing lab at our Sparkman campus, which would be about a million and a half dollars. They're going, they're going to plan to invest in that building, to build out a nursing lab. We will expand the, our nursing program by about forty-five slots. And the interesting thing is, is where the culture part comes in, is that some of these students will be offered scholarships, money to be raised by the Calvin Foundation and the Huntsville Hospital Systems Foundation, to provide them co-op opportunities. While they are going to college, they will also be offered work opportunities inside the hospital. And as they move through their academic progression and become an LPN, reach that point and continue on, they will also get increases in pay while they're working at the hospital, they'll get benefits. But they'll also have a work-back requirement when they finish to the hospital itself. And the hospital believes that this will be a great way to be able to kind of hold many of these recent graduates at the institution, be able to keep them there so that hopefully they'll put down roots, you know, maybe get married, have children, and not see the bright lights, big city of Nashville, just up the road where they can go and get paid more and live in the music capital of the world.